Welcome to the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for May 29th. I'm sorry, May 19th. Madam Cork, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Booker? I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. First, we'll have Attorney Grady give us a prayer. Mr. Grady?
Blessed are you, Lord God of all creation. You bless us with life. You fill each lengthening day with more light, a generous light which shines on all people. We seek your light, O God, in our midst this day for each woman and man of this Board of County Commissioners, each entrusted to cooperate in the making of just laws which promote the flourishing of human freedom. Let your light break forth among these, our public servants. Give us faith that as each new day is bright with promise, so too is your Spirit's power to transform disagreement into concord and unity for the sake of the common good. To you, therefore generous Spirit of God, we commend our work this day, that we might walk freely in your light when people whose future is filled with hope. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for its heart. Sheriff, do you have in front of you the agenda? Are there any additions, corrections?
Making motion to approve agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Madam Cork, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have four items, the minutes from the May 9 reconvened session, tax releases and refunds, recreation and parks, a budget amendment for utilities, and for the sheriff, a retiree firearm item. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Simmed.
A motion or a second?
No.
But a motion and a second?
Second. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item number two.
I had a quick agenda question, Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Quick agenda question. Are we putting it in the OneDrive anymore? I can't find it digitally.
I just.
You did? Okay. Try again. Thank you.
Try again.
I need to be updated, probably. That might be the problem.
I can't load it either. I'm back down the Apple. I think it's the Internet.
Sorry.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, item number two, is the proposed budget presentation by County Manager, Mr. White. White?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am so pleased to be here today, present you the county recommended budget, County Manager recommended budget, and also read you the budget message for the year. I'll do that moving forward. Today is May 19th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, it is my privilege to present the recommended Craven County budget for fiscal year 2026. This budget has been developed through a thorough and extended process involving detailed analysis of our local economic landscape and the diverse services needed by the Craven County residents. This comprehensive analysis carefully balances our capacity to leverage available revenue with the effectiveness of each level of government. As proposed, this budget aligns with the priorities and policy direction set forth by the Board of Commissioners, all while maintaining our commitment to delivering the highest quality of services to the citizens of Craven County. The recommended general fund budget for fiscal year 2026 is $159,246,363 without a fund balance appropriation and recommends that the add of alarm tax rate for fiscal year 2026 remain at 44.48 cents per $100 evaluation. While this recommended budget does not appropriate fund balance, we recognize the critical importance of maintaining adequate reserves. Local governments are strongly encouraged to safeguard against unforeseen events that could negatively impact the county's financial stability and the continuity of essential services. As of June 30th, 2024, the county's available fund balance stands at 34.5%, which exceeds the statutory minimum and is comparable to that of our peer counties. As we move forward, excuse me, as we move towards fiscal year 2026, the county's financial position remains stable and shows positive momentum. For the first 10 months of the current fiscal year, revenues have exceeded expenditures by 2.8%, resulting in a surplus of $1.5 million through April 2025. This revenue growth is primarily attributed to the ongoing expansion of our property and sales tax base, other revenue sources including increased state grants, improved fee revenue, and higher investment earnings. Despite favorable economic indicators, we remain mindful of potential impacts from inflation, workforce dynamics, and supply chain issues. The county concluded fiscal year 2024 in a strong financial position, revenues surpassed projections, and the county's conservative spending approach limited the use of fund balance, resulting in a surplus of approximately $400,000 in the general fund. This also allowed for a transfer of roughly $42,000 into the capital reserve fund, which combined with investment earnings of $276,000 helped offset the $1.8 million used for capital expenditures and projects, thus reducing the fund balance in the capital reserve by approximately $1.4 million. Past events like Hurricane Florence have highlighted the importance of strategically funding the capital reserve fund when surplus revenue or savings are achieved. This proactive strategy is crucial for maintaining the county's financial stability, and it enables us to address future needs without raising taxes or borrowing funds for essential capital items. The recommended budget for fiscal year 2026 amounts to total revenues and expenditures of, again, $159,246,363. This represents an increase of $3.9 million or 2.5% compared to last year's adopted budget. Projections for the upcoming year anticipate a 4.4% increase in property tax revenues over the 2025 budgeted amount, while sales tax revenues are budgeted to increase by 4% over last year's actual collections. The fiscal year 2026 budget includes several fee modifications for rescue squads, the convention center, health services, and water. These fees will help offset inflationary pressures accumulated across these service areas. These fee modifications are in line with our peer counties and have not been updated in many years. Transfers from the capital reserve fund to the general fund are budgeted at a decrease of approximately $1.4 million compared to the current budget. A thorough review of capital expenditures and major repair projects revealed that many could only be funded due to the availability of the capital reserve fund. Capital outlay costs have decreased by $1.7 million compared to last year's budget. For fiscal year 2026, $5 million has been budgeted for capital expenditures with $2.8 million funded through transfers from the capital reserve fund. The budget prioritized investments in essential infrastructure, including technology upgrades, facility enhancements, and improvements to recreational assets. Total salaries and benefits in the recommended budget are 4.2 million higher than the current adopted budget. The fiscal year 2026 budget continues our commitment to investing in the county's most valuable asset by recommending a 3% cost of living increase for employees. This adjustment addresses both inflationary pressures and the need to maintain Craven County's competitive position in the current labor market. The fiscal year 2026 budget also includes a total of nine new pool time positions across various departments, one elections deputy director, two deputy sheriffs, one civil and one school resource officer, two income maintenance caseworker twos, one social worker supervisor two, one social worker two, and one social worker one, and finally, one field tech, water field technician one. Employee benefit expenses for fiscal year 2026 are projected to be about $1.45 million higher than the previous fiscal year, mainly due to rising health and dental premiums and increased retirement system rates. Roughly half of this increase is attributed to higher contribution rates for the local government employees' retirement system. Employee contributions remain at 6%, while employer rates will rise by 0.75% for general employees and 1% for law enforcement personnel, starting July 1, 2025. The increase, this increase accounts for $737,000 of the overall increase in benefit expenses from the following year's budget. Additionally, insurance claims are trending higher than last year, and reinsurance renewal costs have surged by 26%. To mitigate the impact of these rising costs on the county's self-insured plan, the budget incorporates a 5% increase in premiums. Okay. Overall, the current expense funding for Craven County schools is recommended at $25,484,991, a 2.2 million or 9.45% increase based on estimates provided by the Board of Education Staff. This follows a $1,274,078 increase in funding approved last fiscal year. This continues the county's significant investment and support for our local school system. Craven County Schools faces complex and varied budget challenges similar to other school systems around the state. While the recommended funding amount continues Craven County's financial commitment to the school system, long-term issues must be addressed prior to future budget discussions. As revenues from federal and state sources tied to enrollment numbers continue to decline, the cost to operate and maintaining aging school facilities does not. The issue will be ongoing and will need to be addressed soon. Forecasted enrollment numbers by Craven County Schools continue to show a decline in enrollment trends in all grade levels, resulting in a proportional decline in state funding. The preliminary budget meets the estimated needs the Board of Education Staff provided. It includes projected salary increases at 3% for $410,000, retirement cost increases of $47,000, and health insurance increases of $70,000. Additionally, $200,000 is needed to maintain the current teacher supplement related to projected salary increases, fixed cost increases of $250,000 related to increased property and liability insurance premiums, and $200,000 related to utility increases. Also included in the estimate is approximately $1.1 million in projected charter school enrollment increases next school year. The capital outlay is recommended for the school system at $2,115,549, an increase of $9,510 over the current year's budget, based on preliminary estimates from Board of Education Staff. It includes two Capital One, or excuse me, two Category One capital projects over $100,000, which are the repainting of Tucker Creek Middle School and Albert H. Bangor Elementary, as well as a gym roof replacement at Trent Park Elementary. Additional capital repairs and enhancements throughout the school system encompass paving, fencing, safety, and security upgrades, fire alarm panel upgrades, bleacher replacements, and other facility improvements. Also included in the requested capital outlay is $1,105,549, which continues the funding for the system's Apple iPad lease agreement. The proposed budget allocates $5,081,783 for Craven Community College's requested current expenses, an increase of $227,196 over the current year's budget. This requested increase will cover additional operating and personnel costs, including salaries, retirement, health benefits, utilities, and insurance. The increase also includes $23,545, which represents 25% of the overhead cost of the new corporate training center. Construction on this facility is expected to be completed in March of 2026 and will serve as a flexible meeting space for professional development, training, and educational seminars. The college's capital outlay was budgeted at the previously agreed upon baseline of $500,000 plus an additional $50,000 this year. This year's projects include updating the outside stairs at Brock Hall, refurbishing vendor hall, replacing the roll-up doors on the Havelock campus, updating the restrooms at Kelso and Bait Hall, and maintaining the parking lot and road while also updating the LED lighting across campus. All right, almost done. Proposed fiscal year 2026 budget provides balance and fiscal responsibility in addressing the many needs across the county while maintaining the lowest tax rate possible for the citizens of Craven County. Craven County values the competitive edge in maintaining a low tax rate offers in areas such as economic development and retirement relocations. As always, there is still the possibility that General Assembly may take actions that could affect the county budget. We will continue to monitor for those potential impacts. However, I believe Craven County continues to be well positioned fiscally to address any challenges that may come forward. I commend the department head, staff, and agencies for their cooperation and valuable assistance in the budget process. I especially thank our Finance Director Craig Warren, Assistant County Manager Gene Hodges, Human Resource Director Amber Parker, IT Director Steve Bennett, Fiscal Grant Specialist Sarah Williams, Budget Analyst LaShel Bun, and Assistant to the County Manager Shane Deegan for their essential contributions in developing this budget. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners in finalizing the fiscal year 2026 budget. The recommended budget will be immediately available for public inspection in my office and also posted on the website at 10 o'clock. I recommend that the Board schedule a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 2, 2025, and conduct budget work sessions as required. Thank you. Lot of words.
Lot of work and a lot of discussion to come in the next few days. The Board, we're asked to vote to set a budget public hearing on June 2. Do I have a motion to do that?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it.
Look forward to working with you here in just a few minutes.
We'll set that budget for the second public outcome. Item number three, appointments. There are several appointments today. You'll note on under pending, we have the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, we have Craven County Highway 70 Corridor Committee, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Attorney, and the Volunteer Agricultural District, District 1 and 6. Those will be coming up at a future meeting. Under current, the first one is Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Authority. Mr. Bill Pope seeks reappointment. Do I have a motion to appoint him?
Simmed.
The motion? Are there any other suggestions for, or any other nominations for the Airport Authority? If not, Mr. Pope will be reappointed by acclamation. Under Craven County Social Services Board, Rex Bennett is ineligible due to him serving two full terms. Applicant Lorraine Mark seeks appointment to fill his expired term. Do I have a motion for Mrs. Mark?
I make the motion.
Have a motion. Do I have anyone else for Craven County Social Services Board? If not, Mrs. Mark will be appointed by acclamation. Under Fire Tax Commissioners Board, we have John Hawkins seeking reappointment from Township 3 Cove City Fire.
I make the motion.
And we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Hawkins. Are there any other nominations? Not Mr. Hawkins will be reappointed. Chad Anderson seeks reappointment for Township 8 West New Bern Fire. Do I have a motion for him?
Simmed.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Anderson. Any other nominations for that spot? If not, Mr. Anderson will be reappointed by acclamation. And Ron Pound seeks reappointment Township 8 West New Bern 2 Fire Rems.
Simmed.
Rems Fire, I'm sorry.
Simmed.
Okay. Mr. Pound has been nominated. Is there any other, are there any other nominations? Mr. Pound then will be reappointed by acclamation. Under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Stephen Lizowski seeks reappointment from the sheriff's office. Do I have?
Simmed.
We have a nomination for Mr. Lizowski. Are there any others? Any other nominations? Mr. Lizowski will be appointed by acclamation. Walter Mills seeks reappointment as the judge.
Simmed.
We have a nomination of Mr. Mills. Are there any other nominations for Crime Prevention Council? And Mr. Mills will be reappointed by acclamation. Last but not least, under Tourism Development Authority, Parrish Pankhava, Pankhava seeks a replacement for an existing term. Rowena Arroza seeks appointment to fill this vacancy.
I make the motion.
We have a motion to nominate and to appoint Ms. Rowena Arroza. Are there any other nominations? If not, Ms. Arroza will be appointed by acclamation. Notice upcoming, we have the Eastern Carolina Regional Housing Authority. A spot will be coming in the future. That takes care of the appointments. The next item, number four, is the County Attorney's Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have one item for your consideration this morning. It involves the sale of county-owned surplus real property located at 514A Hollywood Boulevard within the city of Havelock with a parcel ID number of 6059030. The offer amount is $10,000. The property was acquired through the tax foreclosure process with past due taxes and cost of foreclosure totaling $3,619.85. The tax value on this property is $26,250. We do own this property jointly with the city of Havelock, which has already given its initial approval to the sale. My request this morning is that the Board consider giving its initial approval so we can move forward with the upset bid process.
Okay. The Board, we're asked to adopt a resolution approving transaction and authorizing upset bid process for parcel number 6-059-030.
Should I make that motion?
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. County Managers Report.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning again. I didn't intend to have comments, but there were two good pieces of news that came out late last week I wanted to share publicly. Robbie's going to pull up a quick image, and I'm so glad the sheriff's here because he has so much to do, folks, his team, with this slide we're going to show you. Robbie, if you could make that as big as possible, please, so we can make sure we see those lines. This, just going to start and read you from the slide, right? If you can just go back down just a little bit, like read that top sentence, please. This is the estimated overdose rate in Craven County is 26.4 out of 100,000 residents in the year 2024, representing 27 people who died of an overdose. That's horrible news, right? That is terrible. Any lost person is too many. But what I want to show you, that I just, the team that we put together working on the opioid crisis, is look at where we were in 2023 to where we went in 2024. It was 81 deaths by overdose in 2023 and 27 in 2024. And it's the direct result of the hard work of the sheriff's office, of our opioid response team, of our outreach coordinator, of all our partners, of RAI, the Commissioners. It's hands down been a team effort. It will continue to be a team effort. While this is encouraging, we've got a lot of work to do. I don't know if the sheriff, I know you want to say anything, sir. I know there's, a lot of this has to do with the enforcement side.
Yeah, it's really, you know, Jack and Amber share these numbers with us every month, and you know, we track it. And from the enforcement side, you know, we've had this, we know what we're doing. The men and women of the office are just doing an outstanding job. It really, as Jack said, you know, this is a team effort, including y'all, you know, for having the foresight and the willing to fund the programs that we need to get these folks that have an addiction well, so they don't come back into this vicious cycle. Our job will be to continue to aggressively go after those that bring this poison into our county and hold them accountable, and working closely with all the partners that Jack mentioned, because it's really, it is, it is a lot more than enforcement. It's what do we do after we get them? Y'all funded a jail navigator position. That's a big part of this success process also. You know, recognizing the problems these folks have when they come in, because not all of them that come into the jail are bad people, you know? They have an addiction, and how are we going to deal with it? And I would argue, and we all agree, that just doing nothing about it and hoping something happens does not work. So I commend y'all for, one, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, but also realizing our number one function is to protect our people, so.
Sheriff mentioned the program that we've got going with the schools and the young kids to try to educate them in advance of
Right.
being tempted maybe to learn that that's not the way to go. Could you just talk about that for a second?
We've got a number of different programs. So each of, each SRO that we put in the school, you know, has a business plan, really, that's what I require of them. Like, what are you going to be doing as far as after-school projects, mentoring and all that? To educate and mentor our children, who, as you know, are our future, to stay away from these dangerous narcotics, poisons, vapes that are making their way into our schools. And we have these folks that are out there that are pushing this on our young, young people, and peer pressure is terrible. So we have the DARE program, we have the Do the Right Thing, and we have a bunch of other little programs in each school that kind of have their own tailored toward that school in regards to educating our kids and mentoring them. You know, our SROs, a lot of people don't know this, but they're on call 24/7. It's not just when school is in session. A lot of these kids obviously look to them as, in some cases, a mother or father figure, an educator, a mentor, a friend. You know, so many times my SROs get calls on the weekends about a situation that might be occurring at their house, or something that they've seen in their neighborhood, or in any situations that they might be going through. So, so important that we're able to reach them at that level. And for these municipalities that think it's a good idea to get out of the SRO program, they're making a huge mistake because they're missing an opportunity to make that connection with these kids. So I'm thankful, and as you'll see, you know, we have an SRO position that we have put into the budget for your consideration for Farm Life Elementary, and I hope that will be approved. So, thank y'all.
Last point I'll make on the, on the DARE program. I don't encourage people to buy alcohol, but when they do buy alcohol, some of the profit from that alcohol goes to the DARE program to help offset the desire, if you will, of kids for the future to buy.
As you know, sitting on there, I know there's a minimal amount of money that must be, that go towards educational and stuff like that, and I'm pretty sure the Board every year increases that and is doing more than what's required. So we're very thankful for that, because that, that helps fund things like our summer, our summer camps for these kids.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. The three things while the sheriff was talking I should have said. Number one, it's a 67% decrease in deaths in Craven County year over year. It's the lowest number of overdose deaths we've had since 2014, and it's the first time we haven't been a red or an orange county since 2014. So there's a lot of progress there. I think our goal is obviously to be a blue county and have a zero there, right? That's the end goal, where we want to go. The other good news to share with you, this happened late Friday, is Craven County was awarded a CABG grant through the Department of Information Technology at the state level. It is for $3.3 million to take broadband, high-speed internet to 1,790 homes in Craven County, which is about 70% of the remaining homes that were left unserved or underserved after our last grant of $2 million. So I'm thrilled, a lot of kudos to our IT team who worked really hard, and GIS team in identifying these locations and being able to work through that process to get it done. So it's a big day for the folks that don't have internet in Craven County.
Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is Commissioners Report. I'm going to like to go first.
I don't know.
Mr. Mark?
On Saturday, I attended a precinct meeting for Fairfield Harbor, and at that meeting we had sheriff Kipus there and president of the Craven County Commissioners and Steve, Bob Benson from the Senate, and also the mayor of Bridgeton. And it was a very good meeting, and everybody got a chance to speak. Thank you.
Sherry and I attended a Craven County Leadership Program, which I enjoyed. I guess it's a program, Lead Craven, what is it called?
Craven Leadership.
Craven Leadership. Okay. That's what I call it then, too. It was a good program, a lot of young leaders in there, up-and-coming folks. Ironically, the next day, I was with Will at the Craven County, Craven Community College graduation. My daughter was getting her certificate there, so we attended, and I expected a few hundred people. I was, you know, flabbergasted, blown away at the I was, you know, labregasted, blown away at just the number of people that were there. I guess they do one graduation, but it was thousands of people. They had a limberney, they had the police out, traffic was backed up down the road. Will gave a speech there, great, obviously a great speaker and did a great job, but, Will Lewis, Mayor of Havelock, sorry, gave a speech there, and it was, it was a good speech, but I was surprised at how many people are taking advantage of the programs that we're helping to fund at the community college. It was a massive graduation, so if anyone's, if you've never been to one of these graduations next year, I would put it on your calendar just to see what it looks like, because it is, and Jason represented as well there, so thank you for that.
Nothing to report?
Ms. Smith?
I attended a statewide town hall given by the, the older, older women, and discussed the issues that are happening in the city and needs in the city. Many of them affect some of my people as well, and that's the reason I was at that meeting. Had a good meeting and discussed some of the things that they need to do, and as it touched some of the areas that we may cover as county commissioners, I will be getting with our county manager and some of the others to discuss what we might do to better serve people in the city who are also in the county and under our support and care.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing to report?
Well, I could if you want. I've been very busy in Havelock and Harlow over the last two weeks, and I've attended a lot of great events, not the least of which is early College East graduation. Those kids go to school for five years and graduate with a high school diploma and a college degree at the same time. Just a wonderful event. I enjoyed all of those families. Another one that I attended was at the library on Saturday, where we had a dozen young adults, teenagers and two young adults that graduated their life skills boot camp, where they learned how to do resumes, proper etiquette, budgeting, just a lot of basic life skills that sometimes get overlooked in the high school and/or at home, you know? Not every teenager that goes to college knows what, how to change or fix the noise. Say your fire alarm goes off, it goes beep, 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 and they think there's a fire and can't find it. Well, in fact, it's a 9-volt battery that needs to be changed. So, basic life skills, another really great event. And I could go on, too, Chairman?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be, that'll be fine. I only have one quick thing, and that is, you remember, maybe a year ago, we approved the city to, to access a new fishing pier, which I'm looking at as I look out the window. It will be dedicated on Friday at 10 o'clock, so it's completed, and that will be a nice addition for people to come and fish and not block the walkway around our property on the, on the riverfront. That's all I have. So Commissioners, we're going to take a recess now. The room is going to be reconfigured, probably about 30 minutes. We will reconvene, and we will spend the rest of the day and then some talking about budget. So for that, we are, we can be recessed.